I learned a lot more today. We still have the right to give those documents to our attorney. Initially, we have option to copy those. But if somebody asks for the school board agenda, tomorrow, I should be able to give me a copy of the school board agenda without taking five days to do that. It's just to try to expedite that process. There is also a piece of that in Bullet Five, based upon my conference today, that the second sentence in Bullet Five will be coming out, but we'll bring that forward in second reading. We can still charge for the page copying, but we can no longer charge for the work that potentially could be caused to our office by doing this work. If we had to bring in a third party to do that work, let's say somebody asked for it, all our emails were sent between the principal and the superintendent. We would have to bring our attorney in, and then we would have to really hire a company to come and do that work for us, because it would be quite expensive. And they would be charged that fee. So that's the change on that policy. Do you want to act on that? Or do you want me to go through them individually?
Would the board like to do it like that at any point?
This is first reading, so I'd say carry on.
You really don't have to.
Okay. Public participation of board meeting. Again, the board charged me to bring a policy forward to the committee, looking at potentially changing our second public input to having items that were not on the agenda. So that is in there. I had consulted with our attorney, and they have done some work on the policy that I presented to you. The committee spent, I'm going to say, a good forty minutes having some great discussion regarding this policy. I commend both Paul and Heather for the work that they did outside of the committee. And looking at other districts' policies, not only locally here in New Hampshire, but across the country, it really enriched that conversation. Again, based upon that conversation, based upon conversation with the attorney, this was a proposal that I brought forward to you tonight.
Is that something you want to talk about tonight? Because I know that at the last meeting, some people on the board was kind of hinting or moving towards acting on it. So is that the pleasure of the board talking about it?
You're saying considering it a second reading now?
No, this would be the first reading.
This would be the first.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay. I mean, the only other thing we can do is discuss it.
Well, so if we have a concern on it, do we discuss it now?
If you have something that's a concern, you should talk to me now, because I would have to make those changes.
Do any happenings changes before the second reading. So if you'd like to do that now, I mean, if we want, we can start either side. I mean, if there's, I know that there was some concerns at the last meeting, so we definitely want to make sure people or the board has a chance to talk it out before we get to the second reading.
I think the wording that they put in here is what we discussed at the last meeting. The only comment I would make is where it says, "Speak once on the topic." If we want to put any clarification in there, like we discussed, specifically how that would happen, but I think this is well written, and I think the advice from the lawyer is pretty accurate. And understandable, I think, by everybody.
And where would you, and where was that, speak on C or?
Under the first bullet point.
Okay, yeah, gotcha.
Sort of secondary.
Paul, you?
Well, Russ, I commend you for putting in procedure on C, and somewhat crystallizing how to have a conversation when it becomes student and/or personnel, and what our policies are, and how to follow the chain of command. And then if, in fact, there is no satisfaction through, it's a student or a teacher, through the administrator, through the superintendent, then it goes to, if it's, if we're discussing personnel or student, it goes to non-public. It's not discussed here in the format where everybody hears, because there are confidentiality. So that was crystallized pretty well.
Thank you.
I'm concerned that we're going to open a can of worms by not sticking to agenda items, because the agenda items we know have been vetted for the personal, personnel appropriateness. I think there's a procedure in place in that if there's a personnel or personnel item, there's a way to get the discussion started, be it through the superintendent to take it to a non-public session, so that those can be dealt with. I'm not sure opening it up in this meeting is appropriate. So I'm leaning towards keeping the one we have in place as opposed to opening it up with this current one that's been presented. And purely from the perspective of being able to keep it, the personnel and any administration issues or anything that's not appropriate for a public meeting to be brought up.
Heather?
And so we did spend a great deal of time on this particular policy. The policy committee did independently review, I'd say, in close to thirty different school districts. We looked at this exact policy, B E D H, in each of the school districts. I personally extended that search to other states. I looked at Florida, Minnesota, some schools in Minnesota, I looked at some schools in North Dakota, and I looked at a school in Georgia as well. And what we found is that these policies, every school has a slightly different policy. Sure, you can lump some schools into different categories as to, you know, this one has a full public forum, this one has modified public forum, this one has no public forum at all, and this one has an agenda-only item. And I looked at the wording within each of these and really tried to decipher how those lines within the policies came to be, and what the rationale behind those policies being adopted by those particular school boards. Of course, I'm not a member of a board or a member of those communities, but I, for basis of comparison, I did look at those. And then we did have a very good discussion at the policy meeting as to what a policy for Centipede might look like. We actually looked at several different policies. And as I continued my personal research following the public policy meeting, I really looked at what might be appropriate, most appropriate for all of the stakeholders here within the school, the stakeholders of the students, the stakeholders of the teachers and administrators. And I did decide that the best approach for Centipede at this time is to stick with its current policy.
So, and again, does the public have access to this, to see what we're proposing, or is that something that only comes once it's adopted?
Once it's adopted.
So I feel like the policy committee did a really good job at thoroughly giving the right precautions in this policy, just that it's, for those of you who don't know, it's like half a page. It's really a good outline of exactly what it would entail to make sure we protect that we're not getting into personnel or personnel. But we're.
So one thing, the only, I feel I could go either way on this one. I think the policies, I think it's written well. I look at it, when I view my opinion on it, I view it as, who is sitting in this seat right here? Who is going to be able to manage the meeting? And it doesn't really matter who's sitting in the seat here. It's just really, how can this person manage this? If you open the discussion up to the point where you can limit it to, yes, thank you, you know, appreciate what you brought forward, that's fine. I think that's fine. The thing that's difficult, and playing that double tactic is, there's a lot of things that can go wrong, and the person sitting in the seat's got to be able to manage it so they don't get the school board in trouble or, you know. When people are talking about administration, you have two administrators, administrator in the elementary and administrator in the high school. So if someone is bringing something forward and happens to say something or whatnot, then it's pretty obvious who they're talking about. It's not Manchester, where you have five or six or seven administrators in each building, so you can say broadly to the paintbrush administrators. So it's a little different and difficult. And the person that's going to sit in the seat here, that has to hold the meeting together, it's tough. And the other thing, too, is, you know, the teachers are protected, too. I mean, they can read things, they can do things, and they're protected. So I really think that, like Brian said, I think we're opening a can of worms. I think it's a can of worms we can't afford, because number one, we're conducting school business. This is what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be conducting school business. I'm not saying that we can't listen to the public. I think we should listen to the public. But we have avenues for the superintendent to deal with things. We have avenues for both administrators and the assistant principal to deal with it in a manner that we set forward. The policies are clearly stated, and I think the policies are good policies. I think because we review the policies all the time, I think we review them, we're supposed to review them every ten years, I think we do a very good job of that. And a lot of the policies we have are really updates from the school board association, you know, has guidelines for. And it's guidelines from, it's not guidelines from Centipede School, it's guidelines from the state. So that's kind of, that's, to what I feel, I feel that it's, to be able to manage it properly, I think that it's going to be easier to keep, to stick with the policy. I feel like we should stick with the policy we have, but that's just my opinion.
The research that I did, I went down through the U.S. News report of our top fifteen schools in New Hampshire, reviewed their policies, and drew a circle around Centipede and reviewed all the policies surrounding us. So that included probably twenty-six, twenty-eight different school districts. Not one adopted the school board associations verbatim. They took pieces from it, and in every case, nearly every single policy was built by the board, because we're put here by the people that are out there. Having said that, none of the schools surrounding us, with the exception of Franklin and Sandburg, were agenda-only. Many of them have adopted a hybrid. Alton, if anybody's been in a meeting that's been going on in Alton, there was a lot of issues there, and they just created their new public comment policy. And I think we have adopted, or at least are trying to adopt, something quite similar to the Altons model, where we limit the discussion of the first portion to just the business items, and then open it up at the second portion for other things. Understanding that we have K E L and K L, so as soon as the chair hears somebody talking about personnel, excuse me, you're out of order. If you continue to be out of order, you're not going to be able to speak. You can't speak about that. And we have to trust the public to stop when you call them out.
What?
Because the next step is for you to ask them to physically reiterate. And I think that happened, did it happen in home? Was that?
It was a select meeting.
Maybe it was home. But the twenty-seven schools that I've went around, I did New Court, Claymont, Mascolma, Keene, Boe, Hawkinson, Alton Borough, they're all hybrid. And I sit here, I want input from the public, and in a perfect world, I only want the input from the public that I want to hear. But that's not your perfect world. You want to tell me. So we do need to have a dialogue. So this is the work that we put forward, and collectively as a board, we're going to have to vote on.
On that, I just have one last comment, too. I looked back at my notes from a year ago, March, April, May, when I was going to the meetings, when they were in the library, as a person, and I noticed that almost every meeting, I asked a question at the end that was not related to an agenda item. It was, John, did you do a presentation about Google Hangouts? And I said, oh, you talked about this, but have you considered that? So I feel like this isn't a new, this hasn't always been the way we've enforced the policy here in Centipede. I feel like, you know, a year and a half ago, we welcomed the public, the four or five people that showed up, could ask really whatever they wanted to. So I just want to clarify for the new board members that on the previous board, you did allow these questions to be asked.
But back then, we weren't having, I mean, when people were respectful, and that's the problem. You know, we haven't hit that then.
And I think this policy addresses that issue thoroughly of how to be respectful, and maybe even take it a step further and make sure we post it at the microphone to make sure it's clear before people speak, so there's no confusion in the public, so nobody accidentally steps into something they shouldn't.
Russ, on the ground rules that you put forth, when you, you have three of A and C, the chairman of the board conducts the public comments portion of the meeting, the chairman will call upon those which will be heard, and the board will take note of decisions during public comment. Were there any other ones that, because I know that that list probably came from the Alton policy?
There were, because actually policy was a hybrid of all the stuff we talked about. And I, when discussing with the attorney, felt that some of those things were covered in other parts of the policy.
Okay. Anything else you want to add to that, Russ? Because I think there's a couple, I mean, there's two that are kind of.
Right. So again, I think as a board, you continue to have discussion. I will continue, we'll bring it forward for the second reading, unless there is some, I'm not hearing to make any change in hearing that two board members kind of look one way, and two board members, two members look another way. So again, this is first reading. It's great input for you to continue to potentially have further dialogue at your next board meeting for a second meeting.
You want to have?
That's good.
Leave it on that.
So next policy, E E A, student transportation. The change in this policy, the first reading, is adding the, again, based upon new RSA, where we're allowed to, where charter, if there was charter schools in our town, we would be, we wouldn't be mandated, but if it came to no additional cost and it didn't interrupt the route, we'd have to make a separate, we would pick that child up, and they would be allowed to pick up school bus to that class.
And with every student.
There would be no fee. Food service management, again, this is a policy that, if I remember correctly, we just needed to add the last paragraph regarding making sure that students that perhaps owe money to their plan are entitled and are treated differently during our school lunch. And so on our menus, it talks about assorted sandwiches, and if a student does owe money and there's a threshold of money, I believe, to their ten or fifteen dollars, the student is given one of those assorted sandwiches at lunch, it's not to be discriminated against, but also to help to make sure that we can have some accountability in our food service system. High school graduate, excuse me, evaluation requirement of children with specific learning disabilities, and this was just a tweak of a policy that we have. I need to clean up the language, because that note that's in there from N H S B A should not be there, but you can see during that note what specifically it is doing. It's just cleaning up some of the language. And again, it's talking about a special education policy and procedure manuals, and not needing a policy in place, because you have a procedure manual. And finally, let's see, two more. History graduation, was cleaning up some language in there, specifically regarding the requirement of geography, civics, and New Hampshire history. We'll be making a tweak to this policy again today after some information that I found out, where it's great to have the courses, but there actually has to be an assessment. And we'll be talking about that administratively and coming forward with that assessment might look like. Facilities and services, and that's a grievance procedure, which we updated, and summer activities, which was, again, an updated policy from something we had that was just more frequent. Paul, Heather, want to add anything to those comments regarding those readings? If not, I propose them to you for first reading.
Anybody have any comments on that? Yes.
I want a motion to accept the first reading of these policies, that's sec. 4. Would you like me to name each one individually?
Yeah. Yeah. Motion was made by Heather.
Second.
And second by April. First reading, all those in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Okay, yeah, second reading. Go ahead.
Second reading, real quick, we had these last time. B D V, board officers just touched on the process when March, instead of the reorganization meeting, the vice chair, if the chair is not here, vice chair will step up in that role. Appointments and elections are made by the board forum. The forum piece was talking about the electronic communication piece added to it. B C D dash R is the rules and regulations regarding electronic participation. And the J Q for student fees, fines, and charges, which is an investment program as part of that process.
Can I just add a couple of things in here? Just with the rules and regulations on electronic participation?
On the table, or?
No, just wanted to reiterate that it's, we're requiring five days in advance, say, if I want to be skyping in from somewhere, I need to do it in advance, five days, so we can get our people available to set up. And that we, during the course of twelve months, allow for two of those items, two non-pleasant meetings, or schedules, or whatever you want to use, so that it doesn't become something that happens all the time, because communication is more than just hearing somebody speak, there's a lot of other things that happen. So it's important to be here in meetings. So that's all I want to say in B D F C. B E D C R.
Okay, thank you. So because it's the second reading, we need to have some, we have a motion.
You can take action on it.
Your honor?
Yeah.
My motion's approved, the second reading.
Motion by April.
Second.
Second by Brian. And other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
Next, your packet with revised policy, B D B C, lunch and care and first aid. There were some legal references that needed to be updated regarding, I mean, Donquille, something about.
Yeah.
And so we updated the legal references. Do you rescind it while we're here? Rescind policies, A C E, I H B A, I H B A B, I H B A B dash R. These all have to do with special education five oh four evaluation, and again, refers back to that policy that we just approved, the I H B A A. This is all now in our five oh four in I U P manual and processes, and as such, it is also law, and the board is no longer under policy. And that's what we're seeing.
I make a motion to rescind the bundled policies as mentioned.
Okay, motion made by Heather.
And either revised, too?
And revised, if you will.
I make a motion to rescind the un-revised policies as bundled.
Perfect. Motion made by Heather. Revised and rescinded. And we have a second.
Second.
Second by April. And any other discussion on the rescinded and un-revised? You're none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay, onto action items. We are on to the approved proposed field trip. This is the one here. I will assume.
So there are, I believe, two proposed trips in your packet? I believe, Sean, you're handing another one out, is that right?
Yeah. I apologize.
That's all right. So two in your packet would be a triple Quebec by Andrea, you know, for the Andrea tonight, with our foreign language department. And the second one is being handed to, that would be the Appalachian Mountain.
Close.
Oh, it's close.
Close.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, could I have a motion on those two, please?
A motion that we accept the two field trips presented.
Okay, motion made by April. And a second. Second by Paul, and discussion on the motion. Anybody have any questions on the field trips? Paul?
No, I mean, my kids have done all these, so I don't have any questions, but maybe others do.
Anybody have any questions on these?
Just seeing this one, but it looks like it has all the information, so it's doing.
What do you think, Jackie? You're good for that?
I'm fine. Please.
You go to the French one?
I'm not French.
Heather?
Good one.
Ryan, you're good?
I would continue.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, approved, closed, budget calendar. Have a chance to review the calendar? Okay, is the only, the only one, is this right here? We know the six.
Right, so I'll send the, send an update.
Does anyone want to make a motion on that, please?
I'll move to approve the administrative budget development timeline.
Motion made by Paul.
I second.
Second by Heather. This is the timeline, Jackie, this is the timeline of how we're going to end up having to present it for the budget building. What's going to happen is we can do this, what it does is it just gives us a timeline when we have to present it, and then on the writing side, it's going to talk about where the deliver sessions are, and the budget hearing, so we have to prepare the budget, have a budget hearing, and get to a session. So it just gives you a rundown on how that has to happen, and then the last date will be the election. And we're going to end here, it's closing. Anybody have any questions on the calendar?
The only question I have is the invite we just got for December seventh, I thought through the sixth. Are we going with five now?
Six, four.
December seventh?
Yes, no, the November second is the sixth.
Oh, okay, so there was a fifth one. Okay, we're good. Who's bringing the food on there?
I did. I don't think I got a second.
Second.
Heather was the second.
Heather was the second. She engaged.
Close one.
Okay. Motion was made by Paul and seconded by Heather. And you have no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Agreed.
Set a date for the board retreat.
So we haven't had an opportunity, we haven't, I should say, we've dotted our bowls in the last couple of years, based upon going through the strategic planning process, and I think this is in line. I think it may be a good opportunity, though, if the board wanted to get together to talk about philosophy and sort of direction, it could be myself and five board members. We could do that at a night, we could do that on a weekend, it could be away from here, it could be at somebody's house, we could do it somewhere at a restaurant, at a function hall, just an opportunity for us to sort of get together and have some conversation regarding the board, regarding the philosophy direction. So I propose that to you, by all means, it's not a requirement, but something I think that might be.
We've done it in the past a number of different ways. We've done it at Centipede Bank, at the conference room, we've actually done it a couple times. We've done it at, like you said, at the restaurant a couple times.
We've had a couple of board dinners.
We've had some board dinners.
Yep.
We've had it here, actually, we've been doing it here the last four or five. I mean, whatever the board's, the pleasure of the board is, it's considered like a non-meeting, so the board is, can make it, we can actually elaborate. No votes will be taken, naturally. What do you think? Do you want to do it? Do you think, do you want to do it this month, next month, or the year?
Well, if you folks decide this is something I'd like to do, what I could do is send out sort of a, to do a survey of some different dates, see what the best availability is, give you some ideas of place, and move from there.
So we'll do that? Sure, we'll set some dates, and then do that calendar thing there.
Yep.
Typically, how many hours are you looking for?
Say, like, an hour, maybe two hours, tops.
Okay.
You know, maybe set up a meal, and then an opportunity to still have some conversation again with the philosophy.
Sounds good.
Perfect. So we want to make a motion, do you agree, Russ, the director did?
I make a motion that we ask Russ to suggest three or four dates for a board retreat.
Okay, motion by Brian. Okay, motion made by Brian, and seconded by Paul. Any more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion by?
Second by Brian.
Motion. Okay, motion made by Brian and seconded by Paul. Uh, any other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Okay, next is, uh, who to approve the date of the C I P want about?
So I, I believe Heather and April are on the C I P. And typically we have done this in the morning. We generally start somewhere between 7:30 and 8 o'clock. Uh, we like to get to each building and just have an opportunity for you to walk around with myself, the building director, buildings and grounds and the administrator from that building and take a look around, you'll hear there's some specific things they're looking for, issues maybe happen. And that allows us to maybe look at things through the budget and bring that forward in the budget. So I don't, I, again, I'm very, very flexible and obviously our administrators and our director of buildings and grounds is here every day for the most part. Uh, again, could, could propose a couple of things out to you, but is there a day that looks better for either one of you between, I'm going to say, if we started at 7:30, if we started at 8:00, it's probably a good hour in each building.
Yeah.
So if there's a day of the week and if we could do that in the month of October, that would be a way. Yeah, no, please.
Yeah, it's not an hour.
No, no.
No, it's not an hour.
Yeah, you can do it.
I remember running through till noon.
An hour and a half. Or in such good shape now, so it'd probably be an hour.
I would have to turn a mile.
Matt's got a style.
It might've been just two people really interested in buildings that took it two hours.
Maybe it was the makeup of the committee.
Um, I mean, I'll already be in this elementary school on the 31st. If you want to do that in the morning, I'll just spend the whole day C I P in the morning and then helping costume kinders at the afternoon.
That's why they look, that day is too busy for me.
Is there another day? And again, I can throw something, if you tell me a day of the week and I can work with the two of you to try to figure something else, we don't think this will take time like that.
Yeah.
Is there, is Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday?
Tuesday or Wednesday's work better for me.
April, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Preferably the 19th or 19th.
But I can't do either one of those.
Can't do Tuesday. But as far as day of the week?
Day of the week is pretty flexible, just not that particular.
I'll throw some dates out there and we'll work on it.
But Tuesdays and Wednesdays work. Yeah, okay. So why don't we just, we'll make the vote, make the vote, but we'll just let them figure out their schedule. Okay. Okay, so, need some of that.
Well, actually, I don't have to, you just.
No motion on that?
Yeah, just leave it. You table it because it's, you can't really set a date. You give me permission to do it.
Okay, uh, next is, uh, I think it's Primex. Was that again?
Primex.
Primex. Approved Primex C A P program, which is the workers' comp.
Kelly, that's, that's in your packet.
Yeah.
Pass the ball.
Um, as you know, we signed on with Primex for our workers' compensation and property liability July 1st. And then being a new member with them, they offer, um, a cap program, which is, um, a program that gives them some stability knowing who their members will be the next two years and also will give us, um, you know, some flexibility in knowing what our rates could be for an increase for the next two years. The thing is, they ask for a commitment of two years in doing so. The exposure policy gets to that. It depends if we have a lot of claims, we could go higher than their proposed rates. Um, they cap the workers' comp at 10% for each year for two years and 9% for the property liability. So typically if we don't have claims, it would be, you know, a very high increase anyway. But if we do have a lot of claims, we're not going to have a cap.
Leave it up to you, what do you want?
Kelly, did you say 10% per year or 10% for the two years of our membership commitment?
It's, um, in their agreement, it's guaranteed that your annual contribution increases will not exceed that 9% of the prior year's contribution. So it could be 9%.
Each year?
9%.
And statistically, the past few years, what have we had for claims? Is this, are we high risk or not?
No, we're very low risk. We don't currently have claims because at this point we went to a prior ones that we're carrying forward, we're not.
And we've moved to this company from the prior company and have incurred a significant amount of savings?
How many other, um, people have been used in the past? Does it agree with your statement?
We've used Health Trust and based upon legislation, we're not allowed to carry both then, so that's why we have the Primex, the one, the Health Trust for health and transcendental. And we saved a considerable amount of money going to Primex for our liability. So when this just keeps us, we come in at a 1% increase, we get a 1% increase, but if we come in at 15% increase, it keeps us to nine or 10%.
It actually holds us to what we've been, we've been fortunate along this. Once we've been separated for 43 years, it's been huge savings. Do you have any, do you have any other questions?
Who's the town used for their Primex?
And did they just switch that?
Uh, the town I think has some.
They've been using it for the workers' comp.
And do you have any statistics from them on what they've seen for increases? So it's just, it's tough to.
Yeah, well, that increase would be based upon what their.
Their claims are, yes.
To their environment, etc.
Which they're going to be a little higher given the circumstances.
Yeah, and full in, excellent workers.
Okay. Um, would someone like to make a motion?
So just to clarify, you, you recommend that we do lock in for the two years?
Just because the claims could be, don't worry.
But if we don't lock in and we find that the rate is higher, then we could just go to somebody else or is this really it because we?
Yeah, we're, we're, with Primax now, I mean, at the end of the year, we could look in and go to a different company, but I can tell you, we've looked and there's not.
There's nobody else, yep.
It's going to be anywhere near comparable.
And it's only a handful, it's not really a handful, it's not even a handful of people.
Yeah, and you can't use the old ones.
I'm not saying in this proposal, is there a fee? Is there a fee for the membership?
To be in the two-year process? No, but that's already part of the fee.
So that helps.
So I motion that we accept the proposed Primex cap program.
Okay, motion made by April.
Second.
And seconded by Heather. And I assume we have enough discussion or is, you know, anybody else standing? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Thanks for. Um, okay. Retirement, yes. One last one.
So I, I hand this to you and I, I offer you the first line and I think it's very appropriate, says, don't, don't laugh.
Yeah, well, everybody keep a straight face.
So Mr. Kennedy, he has determined that he will be retiring, uh, in June of 2018 and by contract he needs to let us know that before November of the previous school year, which he is doing. And he, I don't even say it. And that's, that's his letter.
So he can budget sub basis?
So we will budget his retirement.
Trigger the, uh, the.
Yes.
I move to accept Mr. Kennedy's resignation.
Retirement.
No, not.